Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henan?
Here.
Councilmembers Stedman?
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack?
Here. First order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tem Baker with support from Councilmember Dean. Are there any changes, additions, or corrections, or subtractions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack? Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing after for the pledge. With us today is Pastor Adam Gro.
Let's pray. God, we thank you so much for this evening and chance to gather together. We ask your blessing on this meeting. Would you give discernment and wisdom to this council and compassion and creativity that was needed for the betterment of this city? We just thank you for this weekend we've had and what Easter means to so many people. Continue to pray for our schools and public safety that you would protect them and just be with them and keep them safe and strong. Their schools will be strong. And I just pray for all those that have been affected through school shootings throughout our country in recent months and this year. Pray your protection and your grace upon them. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's now time for citizens' comments when you may present your thoughts on issues not included on tonight's agenda. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or department of the city, please sign your name on the shirt sheet provided at the clerk's desk. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. You can speak on a specific agenda item tonight while it is being presented.
I'd like to show you some photographs if I can just start this around. This is a daytime and two nighttime shots of whatever has been seen out. My name is Beth Baldwin. I'm a resident of Berkeley and my backyard neighbor is the Metropolitan Oxford Apartments. In February, they installed new exterior lighting. My husband and I immediately commented, wow, those are bright. Look, they're shining right in those people's windows, the apartments, because they went along the building. Within a week, those were directed directly at my house. For two months, I've called and I've never gotten a single phone call back from them. I did reach, I don't know if it's just the girl who answers phones, her name's Carolina. I told her what the issue was and she said, yes, we know all about it and we're trying to get it changed, but I can't climb up there and change it myself. I'm like, okay. So tell your bosses. So after not getting any response from them, I finally called the city. They told me to talk to the code enforcer. So I spoke to Jim and he said he was aware of it, had been out there and he took some light readings and that they were within like one-tenth of a candle foot away from legal. I did not ask him where he took this reading from, but it sure as heck was not my backyard because I've got lights day and night that literally blind us when we pull in our driveway from both of our back bedrooms, my son's room and my room. And it's just ridiculous and it can't beat a code. I've read what our code is and these lights that they have up would light a football field and instead they're lighting my house. So we have a beautiful deck on our backyard and I would like to sleep at night and I would like to be able to entertain and enjoy my backyard without anything to do on the football field. So I am just asking for the city's help to have this taken care of because so far nothing's been done and I've gotten no response that pleases me from the code officer or from the apartment complex. I guess that's it unless someone has a question.
Not a question, Beth. Thank you, though. Matt, you obviously have heard this and I assume that we will be doing whatever we can to make sure that the situation's taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please.
Good evening. Charles Terrill from Berkeley. One of the areas of interest that came up in the survey was having a firing range. Lo and behold, Berkeley has a firing range. I've had some correspondence with the city manager and I was told that currently the firing range is for employees only for law enforcement officer training. I can't imagine that it's used all the time, that there could be some time when it's not being used for law enforcement officer training and could be opened up for taxpayers of Berkeley to use the firing range. So I'd like to ask council to make a strategic decision to allow such use and to direct the city manager to have open hours for the firing range for the taxpayers of Berkeley. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Grassa. I'm chairman of the Berkeley Tree Board. I live at 2879 Buckingham. I just wanted to let you know that April is Arbor Day month and this year, the city of Berkeley is in its 28th year as a Tree City USA, which means for 28 years, different citizens around the city have been working to make sure we maintain our tree-lined streets and our beauty. On April 21st at 11:00 a.m., we are going to have a tree planting. It's been a coordinated effort between DPW, the Tree Board, Parks and Rec, and we're also going to have the Berkeley 4-H Club help us out this year. We are going to be planting three trees in the tot lot at 11:00 a.m. on the 21st. We are also going to be having a tree walk that we are coordinating with the beautification committee, trying to spread information about our fall tree planting program and encourage citizens to plant trees anywhere in the city and their property or elsewhere. That will be on April 14th from 9:00 to noon. We're meeting at the high school and the beautification committee has made up flyers to distribute and we're going to try to walk the whole city and distribute flyers. Also, the Tree Board now has its own Facebook page. It's City of Berkeley M.I. Tree Board. And we try to post information about health of trees, education, things that are city-approved. You can ask us questions. That's how we found some of the groups that volunteered to help us with our Arbor Day planting. We hope to come before you soon with suggestions we've made on the ordinances. And I don't know if any of you have seen it yet, but we've been working with the city manager on it and we hope to come to you with that. We need updating on our ordinances for trees and vegetation around the city. I guess that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. And we will be hearing more about Arbor Day in just a couple of minutes. Or now, seeing nobody else coming to the microphone, we'll move on to our order of business. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on today's consent agenda, tonight's consent agenda?
Approve of the Minutes. Made a matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, March 19th, 2018. Proclamation number P-0118, matter of celebrating the 146th anniversary of Arbor Day and designating the week of Sunday, April 15th through Saturday, April 21st, 2018, as Arbor Week. Resolution number R-1218, matter of recognizing Shirley Hansen for her services to the city of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Any changes, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Consent agenda has been approved. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I have asked Councilmember Henan to read proclamation P-0118.
A proclamation of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, celebrating the 146th anniversary of Arbor Day and designating the week of Sunday, April 15th through Saturday, April 21st, 2018, as Arbor Week. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and stated, "Other holidays repose upon the past; Arbor Day proposes for the future." And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, the city of Berkeley is proud to be a recipient of the Tree City USA Award for the 28th consecutive year, and in 2004, Berkeley became the first community in the state of Michigan to receive the Sterling Award as a leader and innovator in community forestry. And whereas, it is the intent of the city council to pledge its commitment to the understanding, education, and support of the global environmental challenge and therefore to spotlight for our community some of the best things the city can affirm. Now therefore, the city of Berkeley proclaims, section one, that the week of Sunday, April 15th through Saturday, April 21st, 2018, be and hereby is designated as Arbor Week in the city of Berkeley, and the city council urges all residents to nurture and care for existing trees as well as plant new ones and to become aware of how beneficial trees are to the earth's beauty and environment. And section two, that Wednesday, April 18th, 2018, is hereby proclaimed as Arbor Day in the city of Berkeley, and all residents are urged to support efforts to care for our trees and to support the Berkeley Tree Board, celebrating their 28th anniversary, pursuing various programs, making the community aware of the importance of trees, bushes, and shrubs. And section three, in celebration of the above, the Department of Public Works, Park and Recreation, and Tree Board will be planting three new trees in Kiwanis Tot Lot located at Cambridge near Cass. The event is planned for 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 21st. Proclaim the second day of April, 2018, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Dan J. Turbrack, Mayor.
Thank you. I have asked Councilmember Blanchard to read R-1218, but first, Shirley would mind? I know you would, but that's okay.
This is terrible because I don't get to talk. I just have to listen.
I know. We'll give you a minute, but you're going to be on a very strict time.
A resolution of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Shirley Hansen for her service to the city of Berkeley. Whereas Shirley was born in Detroit, Michigan, as the only child of Frederick F. and Mamie Hansen, the family moved to Berkeley in 1942 and she graduated from Berkeley High School in 1955. After a few years away from Berkeley, she moved back in 1977 and raised her son Richard, who lives in Ferndale with his wife Tessa and daughter Lily. And whereas Shirley was a PTA member of the Berkeley School District starting in 1979 and throughout Richard's time in the school system, she was co-founder of the Caring and Sharing Holiday Food Distribution Program that is still in existence today and has helped literally thousands of families over the years. She co-chaired the successful 2015 bond issue for the Berkeley School District. She has been a longtime champion and advocate for the Berkeley Schools and its children. And whereas, since 2002, Shirley has been an active member of the Historical Committee and is also a member of the Friends of the Library, she has been at the forefront of civic organizations, planned to place little free libraries in all nine of our city parks. In the past three years, Shirley has coordinated donations of over 5,000 paperback books to the Detroit Veterans Hospital after the Friends of the Library book sale. And whereas Shirley was the chairperson of the Berkeley Citizens Committee from 2004 to 2005, the committee's goal was to report the financial operations progress to the city council and administration on a quarterly basis and provide a final report, also to establish the mechanism for disseminating information to the community. Whereas Shirley has been a member of the Communications Advisory Committee since July 2006 and a member of the Board of Review since July of 2008. She was secretary of the Board of Review until March of 2018. Shirley served as an election worker and a precinct chairperson for special gubernatorial and presidential elections until November of 2014. And whereas Shirley has served as a Chamber of Commerce ambassador for the past three years, she has welcomed new businesses with welcome packets. She was recognized as a Citizen of the Year in 2016 by the Berkeley Days Association. Whereas, a volunteer is a person who chooses to act in recognition of need with an attitude of social responsibility and without concern for monetary profit going beyond one's basic obligation. This reigns true for Shirley Hansen, who has given countless hours to many organizations. Now therefore, the city of Berkeley resolves, section one, the city council on behalf of all local residents offers its genuine thanks and appreciation to Shirley Hansen for her dedicated service to the city of Berkeley and extends best wishes for happiness and success in the future. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, April 2nd, 2018. Signed, Daniel J. Turbrack, Mayor. Happy birthday.
No wonder I'm tired. I told Dan earlier that I thought this proclamation was, I'm glad to get rid of you proclamation. As I recently left Berkeley, my body left Berkeley. I now live at the retirement community in Roiloke and I'm only two and a half miles away, so I'm going to keep an eye on all of you. And I will have my finger in everything that I can stir the pot with.
Thank you.
It's been a love and a labor that I have cherished. The city of Berkeley means so much to me because of the people that are in this city and Mr. Blanchard, Mrs. Blanchard. We have been very, very close friends since they moved in in '78 and I have hundreds of friends in this city. And I hope that it can continue. And one final hope is that we eventually get some kind of a senior development that isn't a high-rise in Berkeley because if you do, I'll be back. I like Arturo Schwarzenegger. So thank you very much.
Well deserved.
I forgot to say I sold my house to Steve's friend of 20 years.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Richardson. I'm chair of the Berkeley Historical Committee. I first met Shirley back when we both served on the Berkeley Citizens Committee. So knowing what kind of person she was and how dedicated she was, I was thrilled when she decided to become a member of the Historical Committee and she has made a very important contribution. In fact, I threatened to chain her to the museum rather than let her move until she promised that she would still continue to be involved with the committee. I guess we'll call you emeritus member. So I think she well deserves this honor and thank you for recognizing her.
Thanks, Sue.
James Jeffrey Tong, resident of Berkeley. I have served with Shirley on the Historical Committee for over 100 years now. And shortly after she joined, I told her how happy I was she joined and she said, oh, honey, I'm just a professional joiner. But what she really meant was whenever she saw something that needed to be done, she didn't just sit around and say, somebody should do this, somebody should do that, somebody should do that. She just gets up and does it. I also serve with her on the Berkeley Board of Review and she has been the secretary for years, as was pointed out. And she's been invaluable because when people come into the Board of Review, they are either extremely angry or very scared because they've never gone up against any kind of a board or an official body of any kind. And Shirley always just says, now, honey, everything is okay, and puts them at their ease. And Shirley has, this is the chicken timer Shirley uses at the Board of Review, and everybody gets 15 minutes to present their appeal. And Shirley explains that the chicken's going to go off when they're done and it just relaxes people. And I am proud to say, and somewhat sad to say, she has passed the chicken on to me. So Shirley is no longer Berkeley's Chicken Lady, but now I am Berkeley's Chicken Man. I just want to say what a pleasure it's been working with her on all the different committees over the years. I mean, she's just, she's the kind of person that makes Berkeley what it is and Berkeley would not be what it is if it wasn't for the Shirley Hansons of our city who have just given themselves to so many causes. So Shirley, we're going to miss you. And finally, I am on the waiting list to move in into the same complex. So I also say it would be very nice if Berkeley could develop some kind of a complex like Roiloke has to help retain people like Shirley and myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, Shirley, you will certainly be missed. Jack read your history, but you know, those of us who've lived around here for a long time or even those who are newer to the community certainly know your involvement, your energy, your desire to be involved, no matter how many times you were politely asked to join a board. You did and the city is very grateful to have had that time and your passion that you dedicated to the city of Berkeley. So we certainly will miss you. We already do. But the last point that both Shirley and Jeff made is not something to be ignored. That is not a flippant remark. There is no reason that folks should have to move out of Berkeley because we don't have a place for seniors to go, whoever it is. And that needs to be something that we very seriously look at in the future. I know we're coming up on master plan time and everything else, but it's nice to say things, but we have to be a little more aggressive and active if we want that to become a reality. I know there are a number of folks as well that are going through a very similar situation, Shirley, and it sounds like you as well, Jeff. People don't want to leave Berkeley. Sometimes they're forced to leave Berkeley, but they don't want to. And if we as a city don't provide opportunities for folks that want to be here, want to stay in Berkeley, then it's incumbent on us to do that and it's our fault if they don't. So that's very important. I don't want to make this about an issue, but we are going to miss you, Shirley. Thank you. Very well deserved today. You have a number of folks that were here to support you. I want to recognize our school board member, Mike Tripp. Thank you for being here tonight as well. Do you have one last thing to say because I'll put the chicken timer on you? You have to at least step up to the microphone. Come on. This isn't your first time.
You're not getting rid of me that easy.
Oh, I know.
There are certain things that because of the city charter I've had to resign from, such as the Board of Review and the Historical Committee. But that doesn't mean I'm leaving Berkeley. And Dan, I know where you live.
Aware. Thank you. Thank you, Shirley. Very well deserved. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-2318, matter of approving the first annual Honor Guard Pig and Chicken Roast Event on Saturday, April 21st, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Berkeley American Legion Post 374 2079 West 12 Mile Road. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M-2318?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city clerk read, the American Legion Post is hosting its first annual Honor Guard Pig and Chicken Roast. This is for their Honor Guard that, you know, performs ceremonial rites at a number of different wonderful events. Your package includes the completed application. As the clerk said, there are some items outstanding. It's been reviewed by all appropriate departments. You'll notice there's a memo included from the Public Safety Department as well. This is going to be open to the public. As noted, it's April 21st, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The event will be open, let's say the doors are open. It's an interior event, so it's much like their fish fries or their steak fries. There'll be food, beer, wine, and spirits served as well. So this establishment has a liquor license and it'll be altering its normal parameters for this particular event. Other than that, I'm not sure if there's a representative on hand from the Legion, but they ask your approval.
Okay. Any comments? Do you have a comment?
We did get handed to us tonight the updated insurance. That was the only thing that was outdated. It expired yesterday, so it's timely and they renewed it and brought it in today. So I've looked it over and everything seems fine.
Yeah, so they have included their proof of nonprofit status, now insurance, and their hold harmless agreement.
Right.
Okay. Seeing no further comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-2318?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-2418, matter of approving the Berkeley Art Bash Event on Saturday, June 9th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on 12 Mile Road for the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, P.O. Box 72-1253. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M-2418?
Move to approve.
Support.
Move to approve by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much like the last item, this is one of our community's special events. You'll note that it's one that's had longstanding roots in the community. We do have a representative from the chamber here as well. Saturday, June 9th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. is the date that they're proposing in the application materials. You'll notice that they have likewise submitted much of their needed information, their application, their IRS forms, their insurance information, as well as their hold harmless. This is, again, in a way there's longstanding ties. It has grown year over year and I don't know if it's, it's the same footprint as last year, correct?
Yeah. Yes, it's the exact same footprint as last year, so not changing anything really. I mean, the amount of vendors are, we're looking at about 150 vendors. You know, right now, the applications that we've received, we've received 165, but we do jury it. April McCrum, the owner of Yellow Door and Catching Fireflies, works with us to make sure we have a nice mix that will bring people downtown on that day.
And we've reviewed it by the Community Development, Public Safety, Public Works, Parks and Rec, City Clerk, and my office have all reviewed this item and all have signed off on it. You'll notice Parks and Rec and the City Clerk office, they didn't write yes, but by virtue of their signing, you'll notice that they have tentatively approved, some with comments and some just for their particular portion of the review, they had no issues with.
Additional comments aside from all the other boards? Yes. Councilmember Dean?
Under the valid IRS tax-exempt verification, you note that it's in process. Do you know where in the process it is?
We're pretty much just more at the beginning process. We've filled out the application. There's a couple of things we need to, we do a cash base and we need to switch to accrual base, so we're working on switching our accounting system that way. Then we're going to be submitting everything.
And do you anticipate this being approved prior to this year's Art Bash?
No. No, it takes quite a while to get a, we are a Michigan nonprofit. We've always been a Michigan nonprofit. They've just never, we found out officially, filled out their IRS as a nonprofit. So we've always been a Chamber of Commerce. But just so you know, when we fill out, we're a 501(c)(6). We're not, we're never going to be a 501(c)(3), which is that tax-exempt charity, just so you're aware.
Yes. Okay.
You also, in one of the reviews, it was marked as not applicable for that reason. I think in the early portion.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Additional comments? Seeing none, we look forward to the Art Bash. Seeing none, we look forward to the Art Bash, certainly every year.
Thank you, I hope to see everyone down there.
Some nice weather, we typically do have some warm weather.
Yeah, if, if the weather's great, usually we get a good 8,000 to 10,000 people, so let's hope, just good weather. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Roseanne. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-2418, please?
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Turbrak?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-1318, matter of adopting the National Incident Management System.
Is there a motion to approve R-1318?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard. I don't know who supported that. Councilmember Gavin? Mr. Blanchard. Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you. For those who don't know, the reason we're doing this is because we have a new mayor, and every time that we have a, a change of command, we're supposed to reaffirm the fact that we do this. This is, this is the National Incident Management System. This is one of about four books to go with this. I won't read the whole thing tonight, but what I will do is I'll read, I'll read you a summary so you understand why we're doing this. National Incident Management System, NIMS, a system mandated by Homeland Security Presidential Directive 5 that provides consistent nationwide approach to federal, state, tribal, and local governments to work effectively and efficiently together to prepare for, respond to, and recover from domestic incidents, which include terrorist attacks, major disasters, and other emergencies, regardless of their cause, size, or complexity. To provide for interoperability and compatibility among federal, state, and local capabilities, the NIMS includes a core set of concepts, principles, and terminology. HSPD-5 identifies these as Incident Command System, Multi-Agency Coordination System, Unified Command, Training, Identification, Management of Resources, including systems for classifying types of resources, qualifications and certifications, and for collecting, tracking, and reporting of incidents, information, and incident resources. Remember that all disasters are local. People must first rely on local community resources and must be, always be ready. Local resources are utilized to their maximum extent before outside assistance is requested. That's why we have to adopt this, and we have to be prepared. We come onto the county, Oakland County, for emergency management, but if we have a local incident, we're gonna be the ones doing it to start with. So that's why we've adopted NIMS, and we're trying to do the training for everybody and get ready for it. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
One of the other things that Councilmember Blanchard and I talked about was a, creating a council ad hoc committee to review our emergency operations plan with updates. It's something that has been, become increasingly important and apparent, that we need to have everything in place, and I'm not entirely sure that everybody here is aware of what our emergency operations plan is, what it looks like, how to follow it, the chain of command, everything involved. So that is something that I will be looking at creating and appointing at our next council meeting. As far as we go with tonight, though, there are no additional questions. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-1318?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
And Turbrak?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-2518, matter of approving the contract with Phoenix Safety Outfitters, 1619 Commerce Road, Springfield, Ohio 45504, for the purchase of Public Safety Department fire turnout gear and public safety officer uniforms for a term of three years. The public safety fire turnout gear will not exceed the budgeted amount of $11,354.78, and the officer uniforms will not exceed the list price per quote. Funds to be expended from Uniforms Account 101310744000 and Fire Gear Account 101310744002.
Is there a motion to approve M-2518?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgard?
Mr. Mayor, we're joined tonight by Lieutenant Corey Miller and Public Safety Director Matt Kane, who will be providing you information on this agenda item.
Good evening. Currently, the Public Safety Department does not have a contract with any uniform or fire vendor. This is something brand new that was started as soon as I came aboard about six months ago by Lieutenant Miller and Sergeant Coburnick. The fire equipment, I'll let Lieutenant Miller talk a little bit about first, and we'll go over the uniform bid.
The, we went to, in January, we went out to bid to RFP. We had a previous RFP that we did do for fire gear that expired, so to continue on with that process, we continued that. Out of the vendors, only one met all the specifications. That was Phoenix Public Safety Outfitters, or, yeah, Phoenix Safety Outfitters. So my recommendation to purchase the replacement gear, new hire gear for them.
And we were just talking about fire turnout gear in this item.
That's strictly just the fire turnout gear, just the coats, the pants, and the helmets.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. For the police uniforms, there's never been a contract, so we've been paying retail to a bunch of different vendors, so we went out to RFP trying to standardize our uniforms. We received, the bids we received, the lowest bid was Nye Uniform out of Troy and Grand Rapids. However, the way we did it is we took, the numbers you have in the memo are for us to order one of each item. There was about 120 items total. We looked at the items that we're actually gonna purchase regularly, which are our uniform shirts, pants, jackets, and when we compared the prices, Phoenix Safety Outfitters was also, also a little bit less expensive. We're saving $6 each shirt or uniform jacket for embroidery, and overall, we'll save money if we, we go with Phoenix Safety Outfitters.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Councilmember Blanchard?
Lieutenant Miller, would you explain so that people understand the useful life of fire gear?
So we, in the fire service, we under, operate under NFPA, the National Fire Protection Agency, so they do the best practices for fire gear and equipment. So they have a 10-year lifespan on the equipment. So the average firefighter going to, the amount of fires that they go to, the, the useful life of that. So it's a best practices replacement, not a actual law, but if, if something was to happen afterwards. The other part of that is after 10 years of hiring in and growing, officers tend to get tight in their gear, and the gear needs to be loose around them.
Because it's raked.
Yeah. So you have to have a certain layer of, of air in between your body and the gear to save you, so you don't get heat absorbed or get compression burns. So that's one or the other. And that, and that 10-year lifespan is for the, the coat, the pants, the boots, the helmets, all that. So this is part of the, five years ago, we started a replacement program to get in line with that, and so this is just continuing out that program.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions? Lieutenant Miller, Chief Kane? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes. Thank you. Lieutenant Miller, I'm sure you'll be playing softball. Have you practiced, started practicing?
I don't wanna get hurt, but I'll give it a try. Don't run into me.
Just have to, your toes need to be a little less fragile. Ms. Boucher, would you please call item number six?
Motion number M-2618, matter of approving the mayor and city manager to enter into governmental agreement for lockup services between the City of Berkeley and the City of Lethar Village. The City of Berkeley will provide lockup services for the City of Lethar Village for $100 per prisoner. This intergovernmental agreement shall be, shall be for an initial term of two years, began on first day of May 2018, and ending on the 30th day of April 2020.
Is there a motion to approve M-2618?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Henan with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my old community, means my new community. I previously was employed for the City of Lethar Village, although the, this item is not related to any of the efforts that we endeavored upon while I was there, but I do can provide some information from a historical context, is that they've utilized the city of the Sheriff's Department for quite a while, after looking through a couple of different other local jurisdictions in order to house prisoners, something a little bit closer to home, was preferable. So Chief Kane, as well as Chief McKee over in City of Lethar Village, began conversations soon after he, he started here, and they were able to come to an agreement, the one that you see in front of you here, which is of two, a two-year duration. It is new to us. We have not previously had a relationship like such as this with the City of Lethar Village, so it is amongst other things, a new revenue source for us. They'll pay $100 a day for lodging up to 72 hours. We don't have a long-term facility, and both our city's attorney, as well as Lethar Village's city attorney, have reviewed it, and both seem to sign off, and obviously, the Public Safety Department recommends approval on it as well. You'll note that there are a couple of highlights in the memo provided by Chief Kane. I don't know if Chief, you wanna go over those items or not?
Yes, basically, Lethar Village right now is transporting prisoners all the way up to Pontiac to the jail, so it's a lot more convenient for them. They're not taking their cars out, out of service. We're projecting somewhere around, we really don't know how many prisoners we're gonna be housing, but somewhere probably around 60 or 80 a year initially, so it's nothing that we can't handle. The revenue that will be generated will more than make up for, for our services. We will not charge Lethar Village to process the prisoners. There's arrests now where people issued release citations, and then at, at court, they're mandated to get fingerprints, so for them just to come in, that won't be a problem. We're gonna train all their personnel, so they'll be processing their own prisoners. We will, we will help out, assuming we have the, the personnel available, we'll help out booking prisoners, but it should be a pretty seamless arrangement. Chief McKee is, is, is willing to work with us to, to work out any issues we have, but this is, and I should say that this contract, actually, I had nothing to do with it in my former community in Farmington Hills, but this is a pretty similar contract to Farmington Hills and Franklin, because Farmington Hills lodges prisoners for Franklin. That's what this was based off of, and in full disclosure, I worked at Lethar Village 32 years ago, too, as a dispatcher. I've got connections everywhere.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you. Is this a similar to the agreement we have with Huntington Woods for alleging their prisoners? Same procedures and everything?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Procedure the same, the cost structure is, this is more in line with the intent to cover our costs during this period.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, just a real quick question, actually, to build off Councilmember Blanchard there. How many of these interlocal, or intergovernmental agreements do we have?
We do, currently do animal control for the City of Royal Oak, which they have the, the updated contract. I'm hoping to get that in, before council in the next, next month or two, so it can take effect live first. Huntington Woods, we provide dispatch services for Huntington Woods, and we house their prisoners also, which is another contract that we are looking to renew also.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Seeing nothing else, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-2618?
No, I lied, it's too late.
Sorry.
I just have a quick question. So did you say the $100 was per day?
Per stay.
Per stay?
Yes.
So if it's a three-day, it could still be?
We, yeah, we don't do that long. Typically, it's much, much shorter duration. I don't know, Matt, you have the average, or I'm sorry, Chief, if you have the average, but we don't, we're not built for, for a long stay. They would be transferred to another facility or advised to return.
Typically, we hope we house prisoners usually just one night. Is it possible it could be three? Yes, but it almost never happens.
Seeing nobody else, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-2618?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, please read item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-2718, matter of approving the purchase of hydraulic hose making equipment for the Public Works Department from Kirk's Automotive, Incorporated of Detroit, Michigan, at a total cost of $13,639 from, from Equipment Account 101442982000.
Is there a motion to approve M-2718?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Councilmember Henan with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your packet includes the, the bid results through Mitten, our, our normal process for going out to bid for these items. It's bid specs as well as results, and a little bit of a memo from Public Safety, or Public Works Director Derek Schuler on the, how they intend to use this device. Derek's available for, for any additional questions.
Thank you, Matt. If I could give a quick, brief summary here, I will update everyone. So we went out to bid for these, this hydraulic hose making equipment. It was a budgeted line item for us, and this is for our mechanic in garage area to make hydraulic hoses. We view a payback on this to be within a few years. We expect full payback based on what we're paying now for hydraulic hoses, and will allow us to get vehicles and equipment back on the road quicker, because right now, we have to send an employee out to get a hose made. Those hoses are quite expensive, so we do envision having a payback period on this within a few years, and I think it'll just offer a better level of service to, to everyone in the City of Berkeley in the end. I'm happy to answer any detailed questions as well.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Do you know what model this is we're getting? Is it a 4100?
I don't know off the top of my head, Jack. And, and I will say, if you read in your packet, we went out to bid on this, and, and we got two bids for this, but one of the bids was not considered responsive because it did not meet the specifications of the bid. So, and actually, we bid this particular tool two times, so I had a bid out initially, and, and I just wasn't comfortable with the pricing that came back. We have budgeted for this, there's a pricing that we expect to see, so I put it back out on the street after that again, and, and we did get a cost that I felt was, was in line with what we should be paying for this particular item. So that's a little bit of background on the bidding process as well.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for, for this and for bringing it to us today. Is there gonna be training involved with, with our folks to know how to use this, as opposed to just going to the proverbial store and coming back with, with what they need?
They will be providing training for us as well, yes, so we will get fully trained, and we'll make sure we train multiple employees on how to use this particular piece of equipment so that we can put it to good use.
And is there any opportunity, or is there liability or risk issues with us lending a hand to a neighboring community if they needed the occasional hose or something like that, rather than them having to?
You know, I'm not aware of anything. You know, we have these collaborative agreements with many of our neighbors, so I'd, I'd certainly be willing to consider that if somebody needs a hand. Obviously, it depends on our own workload and, and what we have going on, but I'd be open to that.
Cool. Thank you. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-2718?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you, Derek. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Discussion matter of briefly discussing the Michigan Municipal League MML Capitol Conference.
Is there a motion to go into discussion? So moved. So moved by Mayor Protem Baker?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Dean. Council, our entire council, had the opportunity to attend the MML's Capitol Conference a couple weeks ago. That is not something that the city's been able to have in at least a decade. Every member of council was able to be there. The schedule's worked out. People, folks are flexible. Typically, what's happened after the Capitol Conference, obviously, we come back with a lot of information and energy, and typically goes into the communications where folks can talk about what they did, and maybe some of the highlights of the session, some highlights of the conference overall. I mean, in lieu of having to go through and then make everybody feel like they have to have, you know, oh, I went to this, and talk about it, I figured we would have a brief discussion, about twelve minutes at the longest, to kind of discuss some of the some of the, some of the major things that came up. And the reason, again, as opposed to doing it individually, because a lot of the themes were pretty common, and there are some obvious things that impact us, certainly, impact every municipality across the state. We spent a lot of time on those in the general sessions. We were able to kind of pick and choose breakout sessions that appealed more to certain things, maybe, that we're passionate about. Some of the overarching things that we talked about that were brought up, certainly, revenue sharing, a decrease, at least a proposed decrease in revenue sharing again this year after keeping it stable last year. OPEB pension reform, which we talked about last meeting, that's something that was a common issue. Infrastructure across the state, roads across the state, the little amount that we received from some things that happened, and the impact that, what is it, ninety thousand dollars? Yeah, okay. It's not going to get us, unfortunately, that far. We appreciate it, but it's not going to allow us or many other communities to do the type of work that they need to do as well. Small cells, which, if you haven't heard of them, you'll be hearing a lot more. We talked about them last meeting, and I have a feeling that we're going to continue to hear more about that as the infrastructure changes for data cables, four Gs, five Gs now, however many Gs are coming in the future. And it's not that we have any issues with improving technology or the ability to transfer data and communicate. It's the fact that these companies can now come in, kind of, and do whatever they want in the city without necessarily having to tell us what they're doing or paying for permits. And we have very little legal recourse against these companies, should we say no. I mean, we've had a number of votes right now, and maybe somebody has voted no, but if we voted no as a community, we would go to lawsuit, and we would lose. I'm assuming that's accurate, Mr. Attorney? Fairly accurate? I know you probably can't say that as confidently as I can, but...
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you. So with that, I wanted to give our council members an opportunity to, and here's the other thing, before I do that, we have not had three new council members at the same time in quite some time. And having this come up at this opportunity with three new council members and a new mayor, in fact, since November, was a great time for us to go to this conference and to be able to really get immersed in the major issues that are happening at the state level, and not just how they're happening at the state level, but how we, at the local level, can impact decisions that are made at the state level. And there's, we were able to meet with at least one of our representatives there for breakfast, but their, a big focus was how to reach your elected officials, your state elected officials, and how to implore them to support things that the Michigan Municipal League supports, primarily because they are essentially our lobby. The city of Berkeley does not have the funds to hire our own lobbyists for every municipal issue that comes up. It would not be possible. But through the Michigan Municipal League, we have an advocacy group that advocates on behalf of us in Lansing. So with that, sorry, I took up three of those minutes. But I wanted to give everyone an opportunity to kind of just, you know, give some feedback on some of the highlights, some of the things that are certainly important to them, and what the issues and how they impact us moving forward here in the city of Berkeley. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, going on the comment that there's three new of us, the three of us all went to a session on council-manager relations, and I think that was very good for us to learn, you know, where the boundaries are and how we can have a productive relationship and get things moving. You hit a whole bunch of the points I was going to mention. One other one that I'm personally watching is House Bill forty-one hundred, stormwater utilities, which isn't something I think we would, it isn't something we would do on our own, but something that maybe we might see regionally sometime in the future, so we can, as a region, tackle our stormwater runoff, you know, and flooding issues.
Certainly. Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the sessions I went to was the Michigan Lead and Copper Rule, and that's the rule about trying to get the lead out of the water by changing the lines. This is a very controversial issue, because the way the bill is written, they want us as the utility to change the water line all the way up to the meter. So we'd have to go from the main to the meter, which means going across private property, going through somebody's foundation, and putting a water line into the house and hooking it to the meter. The problem with that is, it's against the law to do that. So they're going to have to change some of the laws, because we cannot use water funds to work on private property. So there's some problems there. Michigan Municipal League submitted forty-four pages of comments on this, and it is, if it's passed the way it is now, it's got the potential of bankrupting the cities because of the amount of cost we'd have. So we're watching that real closely. When I questioned the presenter, I asked him about, what is the basis, the scientific basis for selecting fifteen parts per billion as the trigger level that the EPA did? And he said, there is no scientific basis. So I said, then what's Michigan's scientific basis for reducing that to ten parts per billion? And he said, there is no scientific basis. So it looks like the state is trying to create headlines by coming up with this program that could potentially bankrupt municipalities without having put a lot of thought into it. So we are watching this very closely. We'll keep you informed and make sure that everybody's aware. And luckily, we have good relations with our state rep who listens to us. The good thing is, the other day, he called me to ask for my comments on a bill that was coming up for a hearing. So when I'm reaching out for us for municipal input, I know they called the city manager also, and they called the mayor, but at least we're getting our input into the right place, because they realize that they need our input to do the right thing. So we'll keep on top of this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I thought the Capitol Conference was really an excellent opportunity to really dive deep into a lot of these issues, hear from subject matter experts on each of these, and kind of discuss those innovative solutions about how to really focus on some of these problems. One of the things that really was a benefit, and not only what Councilmember Henan was saying about the council manager seminar, but also the other one, I ended up going to, the city charter and election law seminar, was that they presented actionable items and takeaways that you can actually come back to and try to implement through processes within the city. So, you know, like I said, Councilmember Henan hit on a couple of those for the council manager. Even something as simple as giving some of the recent changes with election law, making sure that charters, ordinance, or everything is in compliance with recent changes to election law, updating petitions, things like that, small things that you may not necessarily think of, but are actual takeaways in terms of making sure they're in compliance with everything we need to be in. So I really enjoyed it quite a bit. I thought it was really well put together. I thought that all the sessions were really well done. The legislative updates were very thorough and helpful, and overall, I thought it was fantastic.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
One of the breakout sessions that I went to was called reversing the opioid crisis and strategies to save lives when it comes, and why this matters to communities. Why it really matters to communities is because it is costing communities. It's costing communities, it's costing counties, and it's costing the state. Last year, or in two thousand sixteen, four hundred and ninety-six million scriptures, prescriptions were written for opioids. And last year, sixty-four thousand people in the United States died of overdoses. It's a very, very complicated issue that everybody has to be aware of. Extra pills in your bottles when you finish a prescription and so on, the way people can get a hold of them, you know, don't just throw them in the garbage. Take them someplace where they can be dispersed or be gotten rid of safely. One of the people that was speaking, Judge Linda Davis, her daughter was an athlete, and then she got an injury. And this injury was very severe. They put her on Vicodin, and then all of a sudden, she was addicted to heroin, because the Vicodin was not enough. And it was something that she never expected to see from her all A student, well-rounded athletic daughter. So anyways, that was a very good, very good bit of information.
Excellent. Thank you. No, good.
The only, my takeaway, in addition to Councilmember Henan and Councilmember Gavin, we attended a lot of the same sessions, but I really wasn't, excuse me, aware of the vital role that the Michigan Municipal League plays for municipalities. Advocacy and education, I learned a lot while I was there, and I learned about how they function and how they work really for our communities. And a lot of it is, it's communication and relationship building, and I feel that we're very fortunate to have them advocating for us.
Thank you. And that's it. One minute left. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I won't even give you an extra minute.
That's awesome. Another way of thinking about how the league provides value to folks like us, so that we can in turn provide value to our community, is through the lens of content, connections, and contributions. So when we think about content, you've heard a lot of great content here today. I focused on things having to do with technology and cybersecurity, and there's a lot of cool tools and actionable things that we will be doing here in the city to better understand and advance the state of our cyber savvy, if you will. On the connections front, this really is a chance for folks like us to get out and meet with our fellow electeds and fellow administrators. Matt was there as well, representing the city manager's office. Both folks across the street and across the state. We found great opportunities to collaborate with folks from Ferndale and Hazel Park, all the way up to Ironwood, if you know where that is. That's a long ways away. And every place in between. And the good news is, there are folks just like us that are trying to do the very best that they can for their communities. And so the opportunities to share and grow, both in formal sessions, like we've heard here, and in the hallway conversations and at lunches, really add to that human dynamic, those connections. The third piece I'll offer is around the notion of contributions. We've heard a lot about the things that we bring back from the league. The league also offers folks like us opportunities to contribute and share our knowledge, whether it's within a session, you have Q and A, and you can offer up ideas and things, or to take a more active role. And I'd like to acknowledge my colleague, Councilmember Stedman, for moderating one of the panel discussions at the convention. And so it gave her a chance to be visible and to be, and to help take a leadership role in the league operations as well. So when you think about the kind of value that this brings to us, again, around content, connections, and contributions, it's a really great forum. I'm very happy that we had such great presence from Berkeley. And like we've, like you've heard, there's a ton of great things that we can and will be acting upon to make Berkeley even, even greater going forward.
And, you know, another point that you just hinted to, so not only we had a good turnout from the city, but we were involved. The city of Berkeley has a pretty strong reputation from folks across the state who don't necessarily know even where Berkeley is. And a lot of that is due to Mayor Protem Baker's involvement in the league over the years and the leadership roles that he's taken. But it also is, you know, because of our reputation, the way that things have been handled, the accolades that the city of Berkeley has been awarded over the past ten years. Other cities, villages, and townships hear about that. So they're like, they do ask questions on how things are going with us and what we can do, and then we brainstorm with them. And, you know, there's, as different as we are, there are many similarities and problems that we're all facing, no matter where you are, if you're Ironwood or if you're in Berkeley, a number of the same issues. So it was a great time for us to not only brainstorm and collaborate and brains, or pick the brains of, you know, folks who have dealt with similar situations, but also a good show for the city of Berkeley as well and the state Capitol. Any other comments on the MML? I imagine a number of these issues are going to be coming. Some of the issues that we talked about are going to be on the November ballot, potentially. So you'll certainly be hearing more about those. A number of the issues that I mentioned earlier are currently in the House or Senate right now with various bills. So we'll constantly, we'll be getting updates from the city attorney on those as they move through the House and the Senate, and if they eventually make it to the governor's office. So we'll make sure that we keep everybody in the loop on that. Mr. Manager, do you have anything to add? You, again, we're also there. We were very well represented in our executive branch as well.
Yes, and just simply in the vein of connections, three, in this group, well, at the league, especially amongst cities, Treasury, DEQ, MDOT, not the most popular agencies, but I will say that the league did a good job of lining up representatives from those offices to be there in person, to hear from the elected officials here in Berkeley, as well as, you know, two-hundred-something other communities across the state, so that we can make direct appeals. They're used to us, they're used to our emails, they're used to our phone calls, they're used to our elected official, our state elected officials calling on our behalf. But to actually connect these offices with the public officials that live it every day, I was really glad to have all seven of our council members there to tell our story. So kudos to you and kudos to those agencies for being there in person, even when they weren't always the most popular individuals. So thank you all.
Thank you. With that, we will close our discussion, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. What is the next item on our agenda?
That would be communications, starting with Councilmember Gavin.
Councilmember Gavin?
Just a couple of quick updates. Planning Commission met. Public input session has been scheduled on the public participation plan for April twenty-fourth, six to seven P.M., giving residency opportunity to kind of give input on what a public participation plan might look like for the city. So in addition to that, there were some proposed amendments for the uses, an eleven-mile district for automobile showrooms and car displays, basically creating as a special use instead of a permitted use. So there's going to be some amendments to that. It's going to come back, and the Planning Commission will take a look at it again at the next meeting. And then the Community Development Director also created a guide to development that was introduced and discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting, basically setting certain expectations for development, helping kind of streamline that process without really sacrificing any due diligence or anything like that that goes along with development. So that was, those were the highlights from the Planning Commission. And then just on a quick note from the MML, kind of going back real quick, is that in the city, Berkeley residents in the city are very lucky in a lot of ways, and certainly one of those is to kind of build upon what the mayor had been talking about with Mayor Protem Baker representing us as kind of an active participant in the MML, and in his capacity to other officials statewide. So Steve's receiving the Jim Sinclair Exceptional Service Award, is only the public recognition of what he does on a day-to-day basis, you know, of representing the city behind the scenes with passion and determination and that forward-thinking vision. So I think that, speak on behalf certainly of myself, and I'm sure a lot of other people, just thanking Steve for all the great work that he does.
Definitely.
But that's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, I first want to echo Ms. Baldwin's comments on the code enforcement. We all also got a separate email today on some code enforcement not being addressed. I've heard other comments. I've had my own observations, and it's something that's been going on for a long time. And we, it's not getting better. We need to get this under control. The Environmental Advisor Committee met. They decided on their recycler of the year. They'll announce it at our next city council meeting. They're also looking for educational opportunities, ways to educate the community on different ideas. One thing they're looking at is home solar. And then they are looking for input from us and direction on the sustainability plan. So we probably need to have that discussion at some point to, you know, decide which way we want to send them. And they are willing to put some work in, they just want some direction first. And then finally, they said goodbye to their chair, David Hurst. He's stepping down. He's been on the committee for eight years. So we now have three vacancies. They meet on the fourth Thursday at six-thirty P.M. at the Public Safety Building, and their next meeting is at, on March twenty-second. And then finally, I wanted to say happy birthday to my wife, Jennifer. She has been very patient and very supportive as I've run for office and now that I'm in office, and it would have been impossible without her help. And I just wanted to tell her how much I appreciate her and how much I love her.
From experience, that was a very solid move. Excellent, excellent work. Councilmember Dean?
How do I follow that? I want to personally congratulate Councilmember Baker on the, being the recipient of the Jim Sinclair Exceptional Service Award. When I mentioned this to him at MML, I congratulated him. He said, oh, it's just being kind. Well, I happen to know that in addition to being kind, Councilmember Baker is a very hard worker, and we're really lucky to have him advocating for our city and the residents. And I'm happy to be serving with you. Parks and Rec update. Registration for summer camp is officially underway. Interested families may go directly to berkeley.maxgalaxy.net to register for summer online. The next town hall meeting to discuss the proposed new community center will take place on April seventeenth at six-thirty at the community center. And finally, the first tail on the trail of the year will be held on Tuesday, May first, at six P.M. at J.C. Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Awesome. Thank you. Just a couple of quick things as well. First, again, congratulations and thanks to Shirley Hansen for all that she's done for so many years for so many of us, and so many committees, and so many ways. Fantastic. And Shirley, we do hope to see you around. Thank you. I'm continuing my Drive Thirty challenge on Coolidge, and I continue to get honked at and stuff like that. It's actually amazing that, you know, the speed limit thing, it seems to be like a speed, if you do that, you get honked at, number. Fascinating. So I'm hoping we can work on, through the DDA, we have ideas around traffic calming and road diets, and I know there's a broader Coolidge conversation underway to kind of look at some of that, like maybe not call it a highway, stuff like that. that. Might be interesting. And finally, it was Richard Brennan who said, "A business is simply an idea to make other people's lives better." A business is simply an idea to make other people's lives better. And I offer that up as a teaser, because pretty much immediately after the Lansing experience with Capitol Conference, another strong Berkeley contingent went out to Kansas City to attend the, the National Main Street Association's annual conference. And we learned a lot from that as well, and we're seeking to organize a brief update presentation for council and other forums to go into some more detail. But some highlights around, you know, sixteen hundred attendees, and lots of great stuff, talking about how we can continue to energize and expand and grow our downtown. And speaking of that, just a quick reminder again, that May 11th is the kickoff for the Art and About series of events, and for more information on that, you can log on to or connect to DowntownBerkeley.com.
All right, thanks.
Just another reminder, I know Margaret Grasso already mentioned it, but April 14th, from nine to twelve, the beautification committee and the tree board are meeting at the high school for the annual tree walk. I think this is the third year they've done it, I think. Anyways, they distribute flyers to any houses that don't have a tree in their easement, so that, and encourage them to purchase a tree during the time that we're selling them through the city. Also, for the library, please check the website. There are many, many programs coming up during April for your children and for adults as well. Shirley Hansen mentioned not enough senior housing in Berkeley tonight, and this discussion of the LaSalle property has so far been driven by developers. Perhaps, though, it's time that the planning commission and the city council and the administration make a plan for what we'd like to do, and this comes in our master plan, but something more specific outside of the master plan, what we would like to see on that property, and then search for a developer that will look at our needs. So that was just my two cents worth there. And Steve, congratulations. It was a wonderful ceremony.
Thank you.
And, and it was so nice. He received such a prestigious award. There's like eight awards given, and the best one is the last one. Well, he was a second for the last.
Almost there.
So, yeah, he was that close. So congratulations.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one more time. Next week is severe weather awareness week. The sirens will be going off on Wednesday or Saturday this time, so be aware of that. It's a good time to look at your home plans, tornado plans, evacuation plans. We have handouts in all of the city buildings that you can use to help develop emergency kits and plans, so grab some of those and utilize them and get prepared. So, thank you.
And congratulations, Steve, again. Mr. Baumgart?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just two items for you. The city administration's working with Councilmember Stedman, who is our communications committee liaison, on a, on revamping of that particular body. We've mentioned it at the, the last meeting. We got several, I think, like, I think we're in the double digits now, new applications for people that are interested in that body. We look forward to coming back to you with, with an appropriate ordinance revision that would take that body and move it out of its, its very small scope and, and expand it, and also, you know, change the name to be more reflective of our intent. Next item, got back from MML on a Wednesday. That Thursday, I attended the SEMCOG meeting, their general assembly, but the item that preceded it was actually called Michigan's Road Funding Crisis, a very ominous name, where they actually went through some of the same issues that we had talked about in the, in the days previous. They had no new information for us, per se, certainly no new dollars, but we are recognizing more and more the infrastructure issues across this entire state. It's certainly not a Berkeley issue by any means, but it's, it was kind of nice to know to get some of the data that says that Michigan's road, or the Metro Detroit's roads aren't in any way different than City of Berkeley's. Problem is, that's just pretty much a bad thing as much as it is a good thing. So continue to represent Berkeley across any, any of these wider regional bodies, so well represented.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
I do not have anything to report this evening.
Yeah, you will. Plenty, plenty coming. A few things tonight. Spring cleanup is here, and I'm sure you're all aware. We don't need tags anymore. There's no more tags. So from April 2nd, which I believe is today, through November 30th, bags or cans can be placed at the curb without a tag, but if you are using a can, please make sure it's labeled yard waste or compost. So we should not be seeing spray-painted X's on bags lining the trees after garbage day anymore, so I look forward to that. Speaking of messes and yard cleanup, Councilmember Hennan brought up, mentioned something earlier regarding code enforcement, and last year, we spent a lot of time talking about code enforcement and our expectations for code enforcement, especially, you know, as it relates to new bills and what's going on with, with all of the development that we have in the city. And I know that our community development director is working on the plan or ordinance, whatever his, his, his plan is going to be for enforcement and accountability and action. I just want to make sure that with any sort of directive power that I have, that that actually happens, because I will not sit here and have, and go through the same things that we went through last year, because, again, if we haven't been able to correct those mistakes through all the conversations that we've had, and all the changes that we've made to our ordinances to provide the necessary teeth to keep our sidewalks open, to keep a, a construction site safe, which is not the case right now, at least based on things that I've seen in a, one particular place that I drove past today, not at all following any of our code. And I don't want to hear back from our code enforcement officer, anything, actually. I just want them to cite that. It's pretty simple. They're not following our code. I don't need to give anybody warnings. I'm sure if we do that enough, the message will, will get across to other developers, and they will just simply adhere to our, our codes and ordinances. It makes no sense to me why we want to, why we're going to be fighting the same battle that we fought last year, and I will not be, you know, hopefully a part of that. So I want to make sure that that happens. On a much happier note, I want to congratulate Superintendent Dennis McDavid. Superintendent McDavid is one of four nationwide educators receiving the Kennedy Center Stephen Sondheim Inspirational Teacher Award. I was actually, I believe, last week when he was notified of this. Again, only four recipients nationwide. He was nominated by a former student of his, actually for his time teaching English at Berkeley High School, and the impact that he had on her, as well as other students, is, is extremely evident. City of Berkeley, you know, we, we've mentioned this a couple of times, we received a lot of accolades over the last decade, you know, as a city, but a huge component of all of those awards is a strong school district, exemplary school district, a top school district. So it all works together, and we have a great relationship with our school district right now, and I certainly look forward to our continued collaborative relationship with Superintendent McDavid, as well as the entire school district. But I did want to take a moment to congratulate him on that. That's quite an accomplishment. And, you know, with the, there, there's a prize or an award, I guess is probably better than a prize, that comes with this, and he is, him and his wife have actually said that they're going to put a lot of that prize, actually reinvest it back into the school district. So that's, that's incredible gesture from Mr. McDavid as well. I want to give a shout-out to PAC 1085 over at Rogers Elementary. I was invited to speak at their March 23rd den meeting and crossover ceremony. So we had six scouts that cross from Cub Scouts into, into Boy Scouts, but I was incredibly impressed with the attentiveness while I was actually speaking to them for a few minutes, including the parents and grandparents and other people that were there as well. And the questions from the kids were, were good questions. Usually, you just get, you know, how much money do you make? Do you live in a mansion? None of the answers to those questions they like or believe. But they actually asked questions about things that are happening in the city, and it was, they're very engaged, so it was an honor to be there. I do want to, I want to shout out John for helping to coordinate, who was emailing me with, with one of the leaders, and Josh, who actually was, when I was principal at LaSalle, he was actually in, in preschool there, and he gave the most detailed biography of me that I have ever heard. I'm not entirely sure where he got the information, but it pretty much, you know, he was born at Beaumont Hospital, everything through there, all the things I've done. He certainly did his homework, and it was a wonderful introduction, so I want to thank him as well for the time that I'm sure he put into that. With that, we are on time. Go Blue. We've got plenty of time to get home and watch that tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Support from Councilmember Dean. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. April 2nd, 2018 council meeting has been adjourned.